And we'll reconvene the Port Authority.
And good evening, everyone. I will call to order the City Council for this portion of the Port Authority City Council Special Meeting. Just so we have an official record. Carolyn, if you could please call the roll call of the City Council.
Beloga.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Lohman. No Lohman yet. Martin.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
And Mayor Bussey.
Present.
Six zero. Also, for the record to show, Tim Keller is now in attendance for the Port Authority. Tim?
Also, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Lohman indicated he would be about 20 minutes late for the meeting tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Verbogi. We have, first order of business tonight is approval of minutes for September 8th, our October 13th, and our November 10th concurrent City Council Port Authority meetings. Council, unless there are changes or corrections, I would look for a council approval of those minutes for those three dates.
So move.
But hearing any comments, I will look to approve as published.
I just hear a motion by Councilmember Beloga, and I believe a second by Councilmember Coulter to approve our minutes for September 8th, October 13th, and November 10th concurrent City Council Port Authority meetings. No further discussion on behalf of the council. Carolyn, if you could please call the roll.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Bussey.
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries six zero.
Yeah, I would entertain a similar motion for the approval of the Port Authority joint minutes, City Council.
Go move.
We have a motion. Motion made. Carolyn, did you get who made the motion?
It's Keller.
Okay. I saw the blue light go on, but I wasn't sure. Okay, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Peterson. Any further discussion? Not Carolyn, you want to call the roll?
Bussey.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Hunt. Cynthia, I think you're muted.
Aye for the September 8th and October 13th meeting, but I'll abstain from the November 10th vote since I was not present.
Thank you.
Keller.
Aye.
Luns.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
And Erickson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if we could, under our new business, we have two items, 2.1 and 2.2. If everyone would be amenable to flip-flopping the two of them to move the Riverview Corridor project design concepts ahead of the South Luke Water Park and Expo site on adjoining lands item, it would be helpful. I know we have consultants on the line tonight for item 2.2, and if we could get to them and get them offline and ahead of the pending blizzard, apparently that's bearing down on the Twin Cities, it would be helpful. If folks would be okay with that, I would propose that we swap our agenda items 2.1 for 2.2.
Are there any objections on the Port Authority to that? Or do we need to take a vote? I don't see any objections, Mr. Mayor. I think we can proceed unless we need to. Legal council says we need to vote.
Mr. Verbogi, do we officially need to vote, or can we do that by acclamation here? And okay, I think we can officially just adjust the agenda to do that. So let's call item 2.2 to start our meeting here for the Riverview Corridor project design concepts.
And Mr. Mayor, because if we have displays on the screen, I can't see everybody. If I'm missing somebody, please tell me and we can recognize them.
I will certainly do that. Thank you, Mr. President. I will help where I can. So I see Mr. Rogan Buck from Ramsey County is joining us, and not sure who is taking the lead on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and Port Authority members. Thank you. I'll take the lead on this and just get us started. My name is Kevin Rogan Buck. I'm a senior transportation planner with Ramsey County Public Works. I'm joined tonight by Grant Wifels. He's part of our engineering consulting team with Kimberly Horn, working on the Riverview Corridor modern streetcar project, and we're very happy to be here tonight to share an update with you on our project. We have a PowerPoint presentation we'd like to run through with you, and I believe Grant can run that if he has all the right permissions.
I believe I can.
Okay.
Want me to try pulling it up, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Don't know if you can see it.
There it is, starting to share. There it is. All right, fantastic. Grant has the control, so I'll just speak to the first couple of slides. Again, thank you for having us here in your meeting today. This is our agenda or just some topics we'd like to cover with you. The project is much bigger than this, but we'll cover the topics that are most relevant and most interesting to you in Bloomington. We'll give you an update on the overall project itself, on the Riverview Modern Streetcar Project, the engineering and pre-environmental work that we're doing now. We'll focus on the Bedote Fort Snelling, the river crossing, and how we would access into the fort and into the historic fort and connect with the Blue Line. We'll also talk to you about our connection at the Mall of America. The end of line of this project would run, it would run into, it would cross the river and connect with Blue Line and follow the Blue Line tracks all the way into, through the airport and into the Mall of America. And we'll show you our ideas for end-of-line work there. We'll also have a slide or two to update you on the work we've been doing, cultural resources inventory work, and talk to you a little bit about our community engagement work. With that, I will turn it over to Grant, and he will cover the meaty topics of the design concepts and overview of the project.
Thanks, Kevin, and thank you all for having us here today. I'm Grant Wifels. I'm the engineering lead on the engineering team with Kimberly Horn, working on behalf of Ramsey County. We're about a full year into this project, and we're calling it the EPE phase, or that's short for the Engineering and Pre-Environmental Phase. You know, in this phase, this early phase, if you think of it as, I think of it as two phases. This early phase, we're really trying to determine the route and the early optimization of what we inherited from the pre-project development study, which was an earlier phase that Ramsey County had studied from, again, from downtown St. Paul to the Mall of America. And as a part of our work, we're really refining that route, that alignment, trying to understand some of the engineering challenges that are along the way, trying to understand the mode, streetcar, bus rapid transit, those types of things along the way. Dedicated versus shared lane analysis, so depending on where you're at in the corridor, you're in dedicated lanes or shared lanes. And if you think of Bloomington and the Blue Line, that's a dedicated area. It's already an existing shared line with the Blue Line LRT, but there's other parts of the corridor, West 7th, downtown St. Paul, where we're still, we're trying to refine exactly how are we going to be using the existing lanes that are out there today. Another big charge of our project is just understanding the culture, cultural and environmental impacts and benefits along the corridor. You can imagine, this is a multi, this is a huge undertaking with lots of different areas that need to be evaluated. Culture and environmental is a very large part of what we'll be doing as a part of this project. I would say that portion of the project is really waiting on the alignment. So once we understand the alignment, we can really start to dive a little deeper into those impacts. Streetscaping, stationary planning, that will be an important part. Once the stationers are located, understanding streetscaping along the West 7th into the downtown St. Paul is also very important for our project. And just as we've talked about sort of impacts, it's like, it's impacts and benefits. So this project, as it moves end to end, we'll want to understand not only the impacts to the resources along the corridor, but what are the benefits to the users, the transit users, the cities along the corridor as well. And our big charge is to develop, to build alternatives. One is refining the optimized, refining the LPA or the locally preferred alternative to be that optimized streetcar. And two is what's that best bus alternative that would fit within the corridor to compare the two against? We've got, we've, we're showing you, I think Kevin mentioned, this is a large study that goes from downtown St. Paul to the Mall of America, and we broke ourselves into four issue resolution teams. And tonight, we're going to talk about two of those issue resolution team areas. The first area we'll talk about is the Bedote Fort Snelling Crossing and Connections area, which starts at the end of St. Paul, includes the Trunk Highway 5 River Crossing, and then the area around Fort Snelling and the Blue Line Connection Point. When I think of this area and where we're at today, it's how are we connecting across the river? What does that bridge and bridge crossing look like? What does that geometry look like that accommodates that, that streetcar, that modern streetcar rail crossing? And then the fort itself is a culturally sensitive site. We want to make sure that we're being respectful of the area, the overlay districts that exist, working with our tribal partners, and understanding the impacts of the alignments that are being chosen. And then finally, the Blue Line connection itself, just operationally speaking, how do we interline with Blue Line? Does it make sense to interline before the station, on the north side, after the station? And what are those routes and alignments that allow for that connection? And what are the impacts to the Blue Line system? And what are the benefits to the Riverview system? As we have spent, I think we're on our 12th IRT coming up this month, one of the big findings through the, what we're looking is, is the river crossing itself is going to be major to consider the visual impacts of the proposed bridge that will be proposed. We want to make sure that we consider the operational impacts to the fort and any of the disturbance to the historic buildings around the fort. We want to preserve the area of remembrance, which is an area that's being created just on the south side of the existing bridge on, between the old fort tower and building 17. And probably the number one thing that impacts Riverview is avoiding any disturbance to the original rock, which is considered a sacred part of the landscape and sacred to the tribes. And so what that means, that fourth bullet point, is use the existing tunnel. If we look ahead here, and if I go back, maybe I'll just describe where we're at. If you look at the crossing itself from across Highway 5, many, and many times if you just drive this, you don't even notice that there's Fort Snelling right above you, and you're going through a Highway 5 tunnel, that existing tunnel, if you were to look at it a little bit closer, has the geometry like I'll show you in this slide right here. So the top slide is, there's two lanes in each direction, existing Fort Snellings on top, and I have a rendering in the next slide. This bottom slide is showing how you could accommodate both rail and traffic in the same direction. So in the area in yellow, that would also be able to be used by traffic. So this view here is looking back towards St. Paul and looking towards the west along Highway 55. The tunnel in question is in the background here. This is buildings 17 and 18. To the right is the whole, the fort, the fort, and this is the chapel. And so what we're seeing here is how an existing shared use of Highway 5 could be accommodated with a mixed traffic alternative. In the previous section, we looked at, we looked at, let me go back here for a second. We looked at rail going southbound to the Mall of America and northbound towards Union Depot, and this is that southbound train. It comes across Highway 5 and peels off, and then would head along Highway 55 and interline along Blue Line. In the opposite direction toward Union Depot, it would have to cross two lanes of traffic at grade. And what this is showing here is a grade crossing with rail and gate, with gates that would stop traffic in both, both directions along Trunk Highway 5 to allow that train to enter in and move towards Highway 5. So this is that mixed traffic alternative that you might hear about, see about. Also key to this alternative is there's an existing Highway 5 on ramp from Highway 55 that's being replaced to allow for this rail connection. So we're working with MINDOT to figure out, there's several different alternatives to mitigate for that lost ramp. I can tell you, though, that working with the National Historic Society, the Park Service, DNR, there's a lot of excitement in connecting Fort Snelling to the church and re-establishing that severed parcel that would have happened in the 1960s. This is just a different look at it. This is looking more towards the airport, getting kind of get a sense of what that intersection looks like and how it could operate. The grade crossing here and then the split off in the southbound direction. Another alternative that we're looking at is something called, they call it the single-track design. So a single track showing again, top section is the section that's there today. The bottom section is compressing all that work within the existing tunnel. If you recall, we want to retain the existing tunnel and tunnel geometry based on our work with our tribal partners, working with MINDOT. That is one of our, I call it our fundamental points at this point. The dedicated transit would be shown in a single-lane configuration. And so how that works is, we'd have double track from the Mall of America to this point. We'd have double track to just on the north side of the bridge, and there'd be a short segment, less than a half mile, that would be what I would call a single-track design, where trains would effectively take turns going across the bridge. Although not ideal, we have run the operation analysis, and we are comfortable with, that there would be very minimal delays. If you think about how this would happen, the total travel time for a train in this half-mile segment would be something less than a minute, and the headways of the trains are every 10 minutes. So we would intentionally stagger the trains and the schedules of the trains, so they would really never meet in the single-track concept. Only, the only times that this would be an issue is if the trains were way off schedule, would they potentially meet. The advantages of the single track is you're able to take, take advantage of this existing tunnel more, and you don't have any stoppages to traffic that you saw in the last examples with mixed traffic. So we're proceeding to analyze both the single track and the mixed traffic design with our partners at MINDOT, Metro Transit. We still have a number of meetings to go to get to a resolution of what is the best alternative to move forward, but we're down to these two at this location. Again, just another view showing how it goes from single track as it leaves that tunnel portal, and it goes around the church to the double-track design. So in the IRT itself, we need to resolve our bridge options. How are we carrying the train across the river? What is the accommodation for bikes and pads today? If you were to walk across the Trunk Highway 5 Bridge, it's, there's a small eight-foot at-grade pad crossing that on either end, you have to travel up 21 feet, which is steps on both ends. The project wants to create an at-grade, well, some sort of crossing that is ADA accessible. And we have a lot of ongoing agency coordination, working with our partners at Metro Transit, working with MINDOT, working with other partners, where we're working on our train and traffic operations and just the interlining with the Blue Line itself, and some of the impacts and operational challenges associated with it. That's really what we're doing in the Bedote Fort Snelling IRT. Kevin, does it make sense to just pause for a second and see if there's any questions before we move on?
Council, any questions?
Yep.
And as Bob said, it's hard to see everybody, so if you have a question, don't be shy. Don't just raise your hand, but you might want to speak up so we can actually hear you.
Well, I certainly can move on to the, to the Mall of America area, Bloomington segment. And then if there's any questions at the end, we certainly can take some more at that point, too, after you get a chance to digest our entire presentation. The next IRT, and probably the IRT that's nearest and dearest to your all's heart, is the Airport Bloomington IRT. We've been working with this IRT, with Metro Transit, with a number of city staff, MINDOT, obviously Ramsey County, I'm just trying to think of all the different partners, a number of partners in this particular IRT. And we've, we've been working through a number of different challenges. So starting at the Bedote Fort Snelling IRT is the introduction of the MSP tunnel and the train operations of interline tunnel. So as you double the number of trains in the MAC tunnel, we've identified that as an operational challenge that we want to concern, that we want to, we want to, we want to understand, number one, but number two, if there's any issue that needs to be resolved from a technical standpoint, the IRT is the place to do that. Second, working with city staff, with consultants, understanding the interface between traffic and transit operations along 34th Avenue and American Boulevard, and some of the other key intersections throughout the city. Another example of a key intersection would be at 24th and Old Shakopee Road or Killaboo Drive, in that particular rail crossing. So we've got the stations at American, Bloomington Central and 28th, and then citing the station at the Mall of America. Today, you've got the Mall of America is your largest, it's the largest transit center in the state of Minnesota. It serves Blue Line and has an adjacent bus operations that support that, that end at the Mall of America as well. And one of the very first things we did as a part of the IRT, let me see what the next slide is. One of the very first things we did with the IRT was trying to understand the alignment and route of Blue Line and how it interlines at Mall of America Station. So the LPA, or the locally preferred alignment, said, "Interline along Blue Line and use the existing alignment and existing facilities." And so as a part of that, what we looked at is, from a traffic standpoint, what happens when we double the number of trains? Today, there's 10-minute headways with Blue Line trains. Adding Riverview to the corridor would essentially double the number of headways, or double the number of crossings at 24th. And so our traffic team, with the input of some data from Metro Transit, looked at what the gate downtimes would be, and we found that the gate downtime at 24th, sort of independent of how the traffic would function, was, I think, 57% of the time. And so as an IRT, we said, this was unacceptable, was not acceptable to the, to the IRT to have gate downs at that point, given a couple factors. One, the Mall of America, and two, just sort of the, obviously the development in the area, and knowing that 24th Avenue is only going to get busier. And so we started looking at some alternate options. I believe we studied 12 or 13 different options, but we came to two of the best alternatives we want to move forward with for further evaluation. And I want to take a little minute to just show you what those alternatives that we landed on are. So the first option was taking a combined Riverview and Blue Line at grade along 82nd. So what that would mean is, and what we'd say is, we would abandon the, using a rail term, abandon the existing Blue Line and Blue Line infrastructure that exists today, relocate the Blue Line infrastructure along 82nd, and also put the new infrastructure in for Riverview to be supported at this location along 82nd. The yellow are two platforms. The blue, the first, the larger yellow platform would be a nested platform with, for the Blue Line service. The smaller platform would be for the Riverview service. It would accommodate the trains on the outside, the center platform. This brown would be a vertical circulation where you'd go up and over 24th Avenue, connecting into the Mall of America and back into the Mall of America Transit Center. This would be, I would call it the bare bones option, the least expensive option. And when presented to our partners with Metro Transit, working with the city of Bloomington, reviewing these with the Mall of America, I think the favorite is the next one, but this was our base assumption that we worked with, and the next option we showed was sort of the preferred option to move forward with for further study. So option one is the one we just looked at. This is the nested platforms. Again, this is just a basic rendering, just to show you the general form of what this could take. Certainly not an architectural rendering with all the features and elements of a station platform area, but it gives you a sense of how this lays in the world relative to the area. 82nd in your background, the two platforms, the trains on the outside, served by vertical circulation, and some sort of skyway connection or vertical circulation back into the Mall of America and back down again. Just a closer look at what that could look like. The second option we looked at, the one that's preferred, I would say by the IRT, except for maybe the cost elements that would need to be included, are the structure at, along 82nd. So what you see here is similar to before, this south alignment for Blue Line and Blue Line service would be relocated concurrent with this 82nd alignment. Orange is elevated structure, so this would be some sort of retaining wall or retained embankment that would climb, would cross over the driveway or proposed act- That would climb, would cross over the, this driveway or proposed access to the adjoining lands. Um, and serve, uh, it would serve across Twenty-Fourth Avenue. So what you see here is two side by side platforms. One platform would be for Blue Line, one platform would be for Riverview. These platforms have been slid up and over Twenty-Fourth Avenue to connect into the existing transit center. Um, what else? The brown, again, are the vertical circulation. So depending on where you are at and what this development looks like. This could be integrated within the adjoining lanes property development. Um, these are very schematic at this point, but as the development plans for the adjoining lands would move forward. I think this would definitely want to tie into it, um, to work with that plan. But again, um, since the train is elevated. The, the customer experience at this location will require you to go into some sort of a vertical circulation, connect into, um. The existing transit center and down to the main transit level. Let's give you a few schematics of what this could look like as for scale. So you can see that climbing of the retaining walls. You would, it'd span over any, um, connection to the eighty-second. And then what that could look like, um, over and across, connecting into the Mall of America. I have seen a few different, you know, there's been some talk about is this covered? Um, what does this look like? Um, wh- what I would say is, um, Metro Transit, they, they like. Um, the existing Blue Line in many states they're really proud of, um, some of the, the recent renovations that have happened. With the lighting, with the connections, with the, um. The, the passenger connections to the adjacent bus. And so one of the things that, as a team that we'll be looking at and Kevin Ramsey County have directed us to look at is how do we. How, how do we make this service equal to or better than what's there today? And so one of the challenges we'll need to look at is, is what, what does that customer experience look like? How do we cover this up to make it look like? What is the, how does it tie into the Mall of America? Wha- what is that flow-through capability as you, as you start thinking about all the different places that people will be going? So although the, these schematics are sort of blocking in detail. Um, you can imagine that these can get elevated very quickly once we get our architects involved, but we just wanted to show schematically. How could something like this work? What are the elevations and what are some of the surrounding features around it? At this point, um, we'll be moving these two alternatives for, further for, um, for the evaluation study. Um, as I mentioned at the early part of our meeting, you know, if you think about our early charge, it's really defining the alignment to understand. What that end-to-end alignment looks like. And we feel like, at least in Bloomington, we've got that alignment figured out. And you know, one option shows at grade, one option shows, um, grade separated. But I think over the next two years, working with our partners, we'll have a lot, um, more to show and. A lot more to evaluate, a lot more to refine and, um, continue to build out to get people excited about. Our next deck standpoint, as I mentioned, coordination with Metro Transit will be very important, um, getting them and, and us. To understand the total impacts to the user experience and trying to find that comparable service for the Blue Line, I think will be very important. Um, and then continuing to work with our, with the FTA. Um, as we abandon, um, or consider abandoning the, the Blue Line track. There's obviously been a, a large investment, um, from an FTA standpoint into that track. So. Understanding if there's any payback implications or if moving the service from, you know. Twenty-eighth along Old Shakopee Road into the Mall of America. If there's any advantages of actually shortening that up, so you'd shorten up your user time, you potentially shorten up that travel time. For the train, you know, so we're trying to understand all those different facets associated with. The FTA, the Blue Line and any potential implications for payback. Kevin, I'll turn it over to you and, um, certainly open it up. Kevin, if you want to talk, take questions now or just want to get to the end and then we'll take some questions.
Okay, Grant, thank you very much. Just mentioned, you mentioned the benefits of travel time. So a station at eighty-second Street would. Would introduce some extra steps, maybe escalators and things like that for, for travelers to use to get to the mall or to get to the bus. Uh, bus bays down below to transfer, uh, but at the same time it reduces travel time. If you, if you. Count the, the travel time from say the last station along the line at Twenty-eighth, Twenty-eighth Avenue. Uh, you, you could save a lot of travel time by having a station at eighty-second Street rather than. Traveling all the way around the adjoining lands and, and into the, the transit center that there is now, uh, at the mall. And, uh, as Grant said, there may be payback involved in terms of, of no longer using that station, replacing that station at the mall with the one at eighty-second. Street that we've described here, uh, but, uh, construction of the project is, is at least ten years out. So we'll, we'll get it, we'll still get good, good use out of the station at the Mall of America should we end up switching over and, and. Implementing this eighty-second Street station. Are there any questions from, uh, members of the, of the city council or port authority about? What we've showed you so far. I have just a couple more slides to share with you about other work that we've been doing.
Well, this is Bob Erickson with the Port Authority. It's, it's more of a comment than a, than a question, but. Having been involved over my, my career, both as senior VP at the University of Minnesota dealing with. Their whole physical plant and, and then trusted at Minskew. And also my time at SuperValley, I, I've seen a lot of these decisions and have. Been concerned over time that sometimes people don't look at what I'll call the lifecycle cost, the long-term costing and. I think one of the best examples we have locally here probably is the. The use of, somebody had an idea, I don't know, fifty years ago or whatever, that they wanted to run Highway sixty-two together with thirty-five and. To save, I, my understanding was to save some money and of course. The money that was saved at that point in time has been spent many, many times over trying to. Take and, and, and make that into a better situation. Uh, another situation that I'll just relate that drove me wild when I was both at the University of Minnesota and on the Minskew Board. Was where there had not been adequate planning for future uses, future changes. So, for example. People didn't put the interstitial height in and things. So my big concern with this, and I, I have not been close to it, but. I hope as we look through it, that, that we really look at what is the best long-term solution. And, and that in, in effect, we have an ability to deal with something and I understand, I don't. I mean, I'm, I'm very conscious of spending dollars, but at the same point in time, I think. There's a balancing act there that we have to look at, uh, on the longevity of these programs. So it's just a. Overall comment on what we do, but it, it's so easy on these things to kind of get. Down in the weeds and you forget about some of these long-term issues.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much for that comment.
If, if I could also chime in, uh, appreciate this. Thank you, Grant and Kevin, and for the information and for the update and the work that has gone into this. And I know it's been. Trust me, I know it's been a lot of years of work that has gone into this to get to this point. So I appreciate the work that you've done. Uh, I do think, uh, we need to make the clarification. You, you talked about. The, the vertical change in order to transfer. So if you came in at the second level at the Mall of America, they would have to take steps or escalators or so on to get down to the. To, to transfer. But I hope we don't overlook the fact that, in my opinion. And maybe your ridership numbers tell you otherwise, but in my opinion, the vast majority of folks wouldn't be looking to transfer. They're looking to go to the Mall of America. And so to come into the second level, I think would be the most important point of this. If it's at that second level of the parking ramp. How can we make it most, uh, accessible? How can we make it safest? How can we make it most comfortable for guests? To go from the, the, the street car into the Mall of America, because frankly, I think that's where they're going. I do think there, there certainly will be some transfers. Folks riding the, uh, you know, the, the red line from Apple Valley and then transferring up to catch the, the, the street car into downtown St. Paul. I can certainly see that happening, but I think the vast majority of folks who would be riding the Riverview corridor would be folks coming from the east side from St. Paul. To go to the Mall of America. So, I, again, don't know if your numbers are showing otherwise, but that just, uh, strikes me as what the, the most likely. Uh, use will be of, of, uh, the Riverview corridor as it goes to the Mall of America.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. That's a very good comment too. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Members of the port that can see you all as we kind of scroll back and forth here if you have something.
Yeah, we have just a couple more slides, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just to the last point, I mean, I think. If I understand this correctly, this would, um, not only be the Riverview corridor, but it would also. Realign the Blue Line. Is that accurate? Cause I think to your point, Mayor, for the Riverview corridor, that makes sense, but for the Blue Line and being a. Um, commuter type situation for people getting to work, I could see a significant amount of transfers there. Uh, people coming into that location and then going to work downtown Minneapolis or something like that. And am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, yes, that's correct. We're looking at using this, this station for both Blue Line and for Riverview.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the, uh, one of the things I, I believe. A while back when we talked about a water park potentially at this location, uh, there was a talk of a tunnel type situation running through the parking ramp. Is that under consideration in this option? Just so people would have that, uh, enclosed space to get all the way through? Or do they just have to walk through the parking ramp?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I don't believe that we have, we've understood that as to be a, a consideration in the design of. Of our transit station here at eighty-second Street. Is that, is that, uh, tunnel, is that something that would be located near this station? Uh, that we should be aware of?
I think, uh, Mr. Redling, Mr. Redling?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, Mr. President, Port Authority members. So the, the concept of, um, people walking through the mall parking deck is, is something that we've talked about. Um, and we had been in, in, uh, discussions with the mall about that, but the current thinking is that. People would go down into the transit station. That way you're in a controlled environment down there. You actually walk under the ring road and up into the mall if you've made that walk. It's, it's not, it's not bad. Um, it's not perfect to go up and down, um, but at least in this option, option eight, you're already up. In option one, one of the negatives is especially if you're a Blue Line person trying to get to a bus and transfer. Which, and Kevin and Grant might know this number better than, than I do, but. My recollection is, is that about half of the transit operations are headed to the mall and half aren't. And so, um, I, I think that's a gross, um, estimation of the whole business, but I think it's, I think it's close. So, um, Councilmember Nelson may be remembering that we were talking about two connections across Twenty-Fourth at one time. Um, one that would connect to the old Bloomingdale's space just south of the elevated part of the parking ramp. And then, um, another one that's basically where this, this connection shows. And, um, currently. The new transit station that's been remodeled recently does allow for that vertical circulation. Down into that transit area and then through the transit area and up into the mall as you travel west. So.
So, i- if I'm understanding what you're saying Shane, you'd be able to essentially stay, uh, pretty much inside during that time. You wouldn't just be wandering through a. Parking ramp, dropped off there and trying to find your way if you want to get into the mall. Is that? You may have to go up and down, but you wouldn't just necessarily go through the ramp.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, yeah, that, that's correct. And that's why the engineering team here has been talking about covering that area. So that, um, similar to how you are today, y- you're not inside, it's not climate controlled when you get off the Blue Line bus, but you're not far. And you're certainly covered, which is better than, you know, being out in the elements above Twenty-Fourth Avenue. And so. The, this option eight's a lot better than option one. And, you know, as they stated, we, we hope to continue to make it better and just, you know, the. Experience for transit users has been top of mind for, for all of us and, and this option eight is supported by the mall, happens to be here in the audience tonight. And, um, it's, it's an option that we support as well. We've been, you know, striving and. Getting, getting to this point because we think it has advantages over the way the, the trains are routed today. And as long as we can get that customer experience back to something, um, as what it looks like today, it, it's, it's good. Just happens to be a bit more pricey than some of the other options.
Um, a couple other questions. Would there be any pedestrian facilities with this? So that people that, uh, either live or are staying in hotels to the east of the mall that wanted to get there. If they didn't want to cross at grade or wait for the light or anything like that, would there be any pedestrian facilities for them to go over the road?
Mayor Bussie and Councilmember Nelson, we will look at pedestrian connections in this area. I know that's been brought up as a comment. Uh, at one of our engagement events about connecting to other. Other businesses in, in residential areas in and around the mall, but we will, we will look at pedestrian connections. Uh, as to how people can, can get to the station from, from outside the mall, from some of those other locations.
Okay, um, let's see. So this is option eight. Anything to share about options two through seven? Where they went?
They, Mayor, Mayor Bussie and Councilmember Nelson, we did have a number of other options, uh, and I, I believe the other options all followed. The Blue Line tracks around the adjoining lands and, uh, either use the existing transit center in some form or fashion. Uh, or were elevated over Twenty-Fourth Avenue. And there was even an option we looked at, uh, reconstructing the interchange, I'm sorry, intersection at, at Kilabrew Drive. And Twenty-Fourth Avenue to bring the train underneath in an effort to eliminate that, that at-grade crossing where there are a number of emergency vehicles, a lot of other traffic. Using that intersection where you've got a train, uh, crossing now as you do Blue Line every ten minutes in each direction. As, as Grant said, when you double that, the gate downtime at that location is more than half of the time and it's just. It's just an untenable situation for traffic. So we looked at a lot of ways to elevate the train over the track, even one, one that would have it. Uh, go underneath. If we'd elevated the, the intersection, there were a lot of issues with all of those, uh, all of those options. Uh, some of the options worked very well, yet, uh, they were very expensive. And all of those options that followed the Blue Line track still had that, a, a lengthier travel time than the eighty-second Street option. And as a, as a, as a transit user, a three or four minute travel time might not seem like a big, big deal. You can. You can listen to another song on your, on your phone or something like that, that amount of time, but, but in, in transit planning and transit modeling, a travel time difference of three minutes. Going all the way to the existing station compared to a, to a new station at eighty-second Street was a big advantage and showed, showed better, better ridership numbers for us.
Good. All right. Uh, my last question. Was there any consideration of just stopping this at the airport and having a connection to the Blue Line and just, uh, you know, allowing that to handle the traffic? Uh, through this section?
Uh, Mayor Nelson, Council, or I'm sorry, Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Nelson, yes, we looked at that as well, uh, stopping it short. At the, at the airport or even stopping it short, I believe at Fort Snelling as well. Uh, the problem with that is when you, when you want to connect major destinations like downtown St. Paul and the neighborhoods to the airport, to the mall. And to the stations in Bloomington, these major destinations, when you, when you force a transfer, when you stop that ride short. Of that destination or force a transfer, it really affects ridership. Uh, and it, and it, it just didn't, it just didn't work out well for our numbers, for our ridership numbers.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I see Commissioner Hunt with her hand up.
Thank you. Hope to kick myself off mute too. I just want to comment, I, uh, I do like the removal of the, uh, the, uh. Kilabrew and Twenty-Fourth further up on an elevated basis to eighty, uh, second. I've been one of those that. Too many times, even in this day, and we're still limited, um, say client visits have sat at that. Yeah, um, stoppage point at, um, at, uh, Kilabrew and, uh, it's Twenty-Fourth. Feeling like it's an eternity before I can get moving and then going to clients on the northeast part of that South Loop. So it's nice to see that. Um, consideration and being moved off of, uh, the Kilabrew and Twenty-Fourth and the timing of that.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you for the comment. Uh, even transit users riding around the adjoining lands, they might feel like it's an eternity. Uh, just, uh, kind of crawling through that segment of the Blue Line to get to the, to get to the, the Mall of America Station and make their transfer or, or to get into their destination.
Additional comments, questions? All right, I think we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple more, uh, points of interest here. Our cultural resources, uh, consultant team and our communications, community engagement consultant team have been busy as well. Our cultural resources team, uh, is, uh, held yesterday, uh, Section one oh six in Historic Properties Virtual Meeting. Section one oh six is essentially a federal law that requires projects like this to take into consideration potential impacts to historic properties. And how we would mitigate, how we'd avoid those impacts and, and what we can do in the project, uh, to. to, as I said, to mitigate or minimize those impacts. We had a public meeting to explain what Section 106 is, and we asked the public to tell us, tell us about the historic properties that we've identified on an interactive map on our website and to tell us if there are any other sites that they feel are historic that we should take into account. They may not be on the National Register of Historic Places, but yet they feel maybe a significant event occurred there or there's some history there that we should be aware of and take into account as well. Our cultural resources team is developing what's called a cultural landscape study, which is essentially, it's a comprehensive look at the Native American history in the area. The Bedote-Fort Snelling area is considered the birthplace of the Dakota tribes. So, we're taking, we've got a collection right now of smaller studies that were kind of project-oriented or maybe focused on a small time in history. Our community, our cultural resources consultant is putting all of that together, doing more research to develop a more comprehensive history of that time period in this area. And then, our communications and community engagement team, they're also hard at work. They have been, we've had one public engagement event, the Fair-for-All in-person event at a community center in St. Paul. We've had very few in-person events due to COVID, due to just, and weather as well, you know, getting into winter now. We hope to do more of that. We hope to engage transit users at the Mall of America. We'd like to talk to them about the prospects of having a station at 82nd Street and how they feel about having a station there rather than inside the mall, the trade-offs between riding around the adjoining lands versus getting to the 82nd Street station sooner and using an escalator to get into the mall or to get to their transfers. So, we'd like to engage gauge riders there. We'd like to engage bike riders directly, too. As Grant mentioned, we will be looking at developing an ADA-compliant bike and ped crossing on the bridge. We've heard from a number of people that it's an important river crossing. There are only so many river crossings where you can cross on a bicycle or even walking. So, this is an important connection, as Grant said, as a number of stairs. We're looking at a bunch of different design opportunities and options to eliminate those stairs and to yet preserve the scenic view down, up and down the river from that area, too. We can enhance that experience for the rider. Our community advisory committee met in October. We've had two meetings. We have a couple of representatives from the Bloomington, Minneapolis area on our community advisory committee. Their role is to advise the policy advisory committee, the decision-making body. Their role is to advise them from a community perspective on a lot of these trade-offs that we just discussed about a station at 82nd Street and abandoning the station later on at the mall, et cetera. Some of those different trade-offs, we get a community perspective from them. And we've been updating the district councils in St. Paul and a couple of other organizations like Friends of Fort Snelling on the project just to keep them engaged and aware of the project rather than simply pumping out information on our website and through our social media outlets and things like that. And we're very happy and very glad that we could fit into your agenda tonight to give the City Council and Port Authority here in Bloomington an update on our project. And Mayor, thank you very much for moving us up on the agenda so we could go early, so we could go first. Very much appreciated.
My pleasure. Council, is there anything else, Port, anything?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment that having used the stairs on both sides of the bicycle or both sides of the Mississippi River, that anything that could be done on that would be much appreciated. And especially for the older crowd that now is going more to e-bikes. E-bikes are a lot harder to haul up and down those steps than regular lightweight bikes. So, whatever can be done there would be, I'm sure, appreciated by many.
Agreed, thank you.
Well, there is no formal action on this. This was information-only for us this evening, and I think it was good information. Last call for questions or comments? If not, Mr. Roganbuck, Mr. Weifels, thank you very much for spending your time with us this evening, appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much.
With that, if we could double back in our agenda to Item 2.1, which is the South Loop Water Park and Expo Site on Adjoining Lands. And I will make note that Councilmember Loman has joined us. Good to see you, Dwayne, thanks for being here. Mr. Redling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. President, and Port Authority Commissioners. So, tonight, again, we've talked at the, a series of recent concurrent meetings with the Port Authority and Council about both the water park and the expo and how to deliver those projects. And tonight, we have for consideration a letter of intent with the Triple Five organization to move both the water park and provide a site for the expo, move those two projects forward. So, what we'll do tonight is relatively quickly review the principles and objectives, which you've seen many times. We'll show a parcel map, and unfortunately, a lot of this is text. There won't be pretty pictures like the River View Corridor presentation tonight. Sorry about that, I've never been able to make some of this stuff more interesting, but that just is what it is. So, with that, I'm not going to go through the long history on the water park project that started back in March of 2018 in earnest. I will kind of highlight the last three meetings we've had related to this project and these projects. On September 8, the Council and Port passed motions directing staff to work with Triple Five to study the private financing option that would utilize 2021 legislation for the water park project. And so, since then, we've been doing that in earnest. And then, on October 13, the Council and Port passed a motion to help bring Expo to Minnesota. And with the potential site for that project being at the core of it, the adjoining lands. And then, on November 10, we had in part a closed session and in part an open session. The ultimate motion was related to the adjoining lands was to negotiate a deal that we had discussed parts of it in the private session. That is now, you know, presented in public forum here tonight as part of the letter of intent for consideration. What this does is, again, it helps deliver a site, a core site for the expo and allows the water park to move forward. So, our strategic priorities, I know that's, these are our kind of old strategic priorities, if you will, and are currently being refashioned as part of a group. The South Loop Plan's goals, again, this project or these projects help accelerate the district's development. We had principles for public investment back when we executed the redevelopment contract for the mall. And then, again, we zoomed in a little bit closer on the redevelopment contract objectives specifically. And this project, the water park project is on the Met Center site, so next to IKEA, north of the Mall of America. And the adjoining lands is 31 acres and change just to the east of the mall and was subject of the River View Corridor. So, the River View Corridor project, again, would come along the north side of the adjoining lands instead of going around the east and south sides. And the water park project, zooming in a bit on that, again, to the east of IKEA and north of the JW Marriott project. So, in a nutshell, what this letter of intent provides is a financing framework for T5 to go formally pursue the private markets for the water park. So, again, this is different than the nonprofit model, which we had discussed up until COVID hit. The 2021 legislation allows TIF to be used more flexibly, and we would inject additional $30 million into the project. And then, we would allow a TIF loan to happen that would provide about $9 million in equity that exists on the adjoining lands. We'd free that up, if you will, and then require that to be used on the water park project, so that money stays in Bloomington. And in exchange for that, we secure a core site for Expo, that is, the adjoining lands. And so, we would have a purchase option so that if Expo happens, if the Bureau of International Exhibitions votes to give Minnesota and USA the Expo, this would be the site for it. Now, the permanent funding for that Expo site would either come from South Loop Development Fund, the private development community grants or other funds, but in the interim, we would use Mall TIF to fund that.
Shane, just to interrupt you for a minute, I think it's important on this to, for any public that are listening to this, to know that all of this money that we're talking about here is what I will call fenced money. It is dollars that have to be used exclusively in the South Loop area. And so, they are not something that you would be looking at as available for general revenue use or other use.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yes, when we talk about TIF and Mall TIF in this context, it's money that is governed by both state statute and our 2016 agreement with Triple Five for the use of those funds. And it can only be used for these types of things. So, there's been a little bit of term changes from when we talked during the closed session. During that time, we were talking about actually purchasing and closing on the adjoining lands. And we've since been working on more of an option agreement that allows for a purchase. So, instead of purchase and then with some option provisions, we think it's cleaner to do an option that provides for a purchase. The money is basically the same, and the goals are basically the same, but this is a bit cleaner than actually going through a purchase. And then, if Expo doesn't happen for some reason, T5 buys the land back. We transact the land potentially if we don't actually need to do that. And so, the letter of intent that's included with the packet and then we'll go through tonight is an option to purchase instead of a purchase with some reversionary interests, if you will. And so, we'll get into the details, and I'll go through this hopefully at the right speed. If people want me to slow down or speed up, please let me know. But what's the price of the property? And so, in consideration for this option, we'd provide the mall or T5 this TIF loan. And the amount is going to be the city slash Hennepin County assessed value minus any mortgage amount and mortgage breakage fees. Now, the breakage fees might not be applicable because Triple Five is going to close, and we would time an actual closing up with the expiration of their mortgage, so we could potentially avoid those fees. But we left that provision in there in case there are any. But the TIF loan amount, again, roughly $27 million, $27.5 million, minus roughly $17.5 million, yielding somewhere between $9 and $10 million in the Mall TIF loan, or just call it the TIF loan. And then, in the event the Expo is selected for USA and Minnesota, we would close on the project and we would use the Mall TIF account to fund that in the interim. And if Expo doesn't happen, T5 gets the land back, basically. They'd have to repay the TIF loan, however. And then, the ultimate land price is somewhere between the Bloomington slash Hennepin County assessed value and a mortgage that Triple Five's lender is currently, has completed, and we are getting a copy of it. It's somewhere in the mid-$30 million range. So, it's roughly $10 million or so higher than the Bloomington assessed value. And so, the site cost would be different depending on who does the developing. And so, if the site's developed by a third party, Triple Five would be ultimately selling that to basically not the city and not the Port Authority. And so, Triple Five's intent, I don't want to speak for them too much, Kurt Hagan's here, he can speak for them, but, I mean, they bought this land so that they can control it. They're supporters of the Expo, they want the water park to get done. And, but ultimately, they like controlling the land next to their property. That's a big goal of theirs. And so, if they're selling it to a third-party developer, it's a little bit more like a market sale than it is if they're selling it to us. So, in B.I. versus B.DBI, the price is different. So, if you look at B.DBI, so if we buy it, the city and the port manage the development, we would, the sale price would be the Hennepin County or Bloomington assessed value, which is currently $27.5 million or roughly $20 bucks a square foot. Versus if a third-party developer develops it, we put bookends. So, in B.I.A., the price is somewhere between the new mortgage, that mid-30s that I talked about, and the Hennepin County slash Bloomington assessed value. And then, if the third-party and the developer, third-party and Triple Five can't agree on a price, they enter into a process where each hire an appraiser, and then those appraisers hire a third appraiser, agree on one, and the price is figured out through a process very similar to how we have it laid out in our existing recapture agreements. So, it's somewhere between their mortgage appraisal and the Hennepin County assessed value. I'll pause there in case there's questions. Okay, I'll keep moving. So, and in the event that Expo is not selected for Minnesota, T5 would, through this agreement, commit to repaying the TIF loan within four years of the vote. And so, they pay it back, all is well. If they don't pay it back, the security is a purchase option granted to the port, which allows us to buy the rest of the land for the difference between the TIF loan and the remaining value. So, we basically buy the land using Mall TIF for the Bloomington assessed value. So, we end up paying $27.5 for the land, T5 doesn't have the land. And then, there's some provisions in here that are more city-centric, if you will, on what happens to the TIF and what the resale price is and that type of thing. And I know T5 has no intent of letting this happen because this outcome isn't good for them. And I know that they want to pay this loan back and continue to control the land if Expo doesn't happen. Interest on the TIF loan, currently, the city's investment rate, 0.68%. That way, the city's TIF account is made whole. Other provisions, so currently, there's some entitlement required parking on the adjoining lands on this parcel that's required for the Mall of America. We'd wait till the latest possible waypoint to actually build those into a parking ramp that would get built next to the water park. But it's a little bit of a timing challenge with this particular provision because of when the BI E vote might be, when the water park might close financing and that type of thing. But the point here is that we would have to provide that parking someplace. And then, Item Five is a deed restriction or an agreement. We're still working on this, both this exhibit and the mechanism, about what land use restrictions there would be on the adjoining lands. And we're close, we've been negotiating that all throughout the week and even up to right before this meeting. It's not quite ready, it needs a little bit more work, but we're very close to getting that tied down. And then, Six, Triple Five, of course, can't increase the debt on the site beyond what exists there today. Otherwise, the whole thing doesn't work, so there'd be a restriction on that. And the TIF loan proceeds would be dedicated to the water park. They get drawn on a monthly basis. And then, if for some reason the water park stops, you know, that TIF loan is reduced to whatever's been paid. So, if we, you know, if we advance $4 million, the TIF loan's $4 million, and then, of course, T5 has to pay back that $4 million. And Eight is basically a, you know, state auditor slash statute provision. You know, if we sell the land and get land sale proceeds, of course, that would be the intent. Once a dollar is TIF to buy land, if you sell the land, you have to put that back into TIF. So, it's like a, think about it as once TIF, always TIF. And then, we'd have to modify the TIF spending plan in order to utilize TIF for the purpose, but that's mostly a procedural step. And then, on the water park, so again, the Council and Port directed us to take a look at a privately-developed water park. And so, this would transform back into a much more understood format for the financing, except for the additional $30 million that we would put in via the 2021 legislation. We'd have to tweak the public-private formula. And we do the recapture, similar to the And we do the recapture similar to the terms that we've done in the past with some important deviations. So with that $30 million additional, we would have tight recapture provisions on that, on that money. And so if you recall, a lot of times we do recapture and then allow the developer to make the projected profit. And then we have some buffer above that so that they have some upside. We would not have that upside on this $30 million, nor would we have it on, on the other portion that we had potentially invested in, in the parking and infrastructure. So there's another 73 million. Again, we'd have those same recapture provisions. And the agreement would work, would work the same way, except for there's no buffer above the baseline pro forma in this deal. And then, so if a hotel happens along with the water park, the hotel would share in the parking and we would allocate some of that $73 million parking and infrastructure package to the hotel. And that would, the recapture provisions would, you know, go along with that project. And so you could see, just say, 30 million of that 70 being allocated to the hotel and the potential recapture hit to the water park would then be reduced by that amount. This, this arrangement has some other benefits to the South Loop Development Fund. The South Loop Development Fund has paid about $7.5 million in water park design. And on closing, that money would get paid out to the South Loop Development Fund. So it has a benefit to that fund. And then the development fee for these public improvements would be below market, if you will, at 1% instead of what a lot of times is three, sometimes five, sometimes 10 on affordable housing projects. Term sheets aren't binding like this. Nothing's binding until we actually sign the documents. Of course, it's a step towards actually a commitment. And so we would be executing this, but it technically is a non-binding document. And then benefits to the city. So that you've seen this before, but I'll, I'll go through it again. You know, the water park is a recreational amenity to the city and the region certainly helps with their resiliency for South Loop. We all know malls, 10% of the city's tax base and the hotels are another six and a half, roughly speaking. And admissions taxes and lodging taxes generated by the project are substantial. And the city could designate those funds to a number of different things. Housing trust fund, citywide development, or other specific uses. There are some risks. Of course, with the nonprofit model, some of those go away. Certainly, low performance of the water park is always a risk. What would happen if that project defaults is a little bit different in the nonprofit model versus this model. We're further away from the project in the privately financed model. So it's a little bit better from that perspective. Reputation, we're still involved in the project if it's privately financed, but nobody wants a project that, that fails in its city. We don't think it will, but that's always something that's, that's a possibility. Ownership changes at the mall are always something that we think about. They've weathered the COVID storm pretty well and our backup. I've heard some anecdotal reports that Black Friday was extremely busy out there. And our traffic and parking counters have showed that they're coming back. People are, there's pent up demand for, for leisure and recreation, that's for sure. Small performance decline. I mean, I think that's one of the things that the water park can actually help with to provide some resiliency to the project. Somehow, you know, recovering the $30 million in TIF, I call it equity here. It's, it's a little bit, doesn't function as equity. But recovery of that money is, you know, probably not coming back. I mean, the pro forma is the pro forma. That's how we think it's going to perform, but you never know. And that's why we have recapture provisions. And then, of course, there's risks of, of not doing the project. So that's, that's a lot of detail. I know there's a lot in there. Happy to answer any questions. And I know Kurt Hagan for, from Triple Five is here in the room as well. If people have questions for, for T five. But just, you know, looking ahead, what we'd be asking the city council to do and port authority to do is to approve, you know, staff and manager and everybody executing a letter of intent so that Triple Five can then go forth and seek private financing for the water park. And the city and port authority would then represent back to the expo organizing group that the core site for the expo is secure. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Shane, I just want to make a, a comment more based upon several of the meetings that we've had with Triple Five management. And that is, is that they, they, to my understanding, their, their management turnover or changeover between generations is well underway. And they have given us some thoughtful consideration. And, and I think the next generation is, is moving into a position of authority. So I think from my standpoint, that was important to hear. And Kurt Hagan may want to comment more on that. But again, that, that has been something that has concerned me in the past.
Yeah, Mr. President and Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. So, you know, especially recently, we've been meeting with Triple Five, the family and ownership on a more regular basis and trying to understand what, what their vision for the future is, how it fits in with their larger corporation, and trying to, to build the relationship between city leaders and the Jermesian family themselves. And it's, it's been a positive experience recently on that front. I think we understand them more. I think our, our goals are more aligned. And, you know, there are other projects in Canada and in New Jersey are at different phases. You know, the mall is a, a very successful project. Canada's successful too. American Dream probably will be, but that, that project has had a lot of bad luck. And, you know, COVID is, is, you know, continuing to challenge that project. But, you know, the Mall of America is, is a, is a strong asset. And that's one of the things that we, you know, dug into and learned a lot about, especially in 2020, which is a challenging year for, for everybody. But since then, we've, we've been, you know, engaging more with the Jermesian ownership. And it's been a positive experience so far.
Mr. President, I see Commissioner Hunt's hand up.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you. Mr. President and, and Shane, it's, it's good to hear the comments. And since you, I know you've been having meetings with them. It's always valuable to sit across the desk or across a table from them and, and face to face discussions. Too many times over the years, we've had discussions at the port and council level about deviations or not adherence to loan agreements or covenants and so forth, not following through. So that was one of my concerns with the transition, what's actually happening. And that element of trust with the people you're doing business with is so important and, and the communication. So it's good to hear from both of you. And I think Mayor Bussey and, and Jamie as well, that some of the kind, the discussions are taking a more positive stance than what they may have been at times in the past. But hearing that the vision is being articulated and, and that's been my ongoing concern is, is, is really the willingness to adhere to the agreements and what's stated to us and that they continue and see that value and the need and being good partners with us too as well.
Well, I can just comment to Commissioner Hunt that we were very candid and very direct. And they gave us very direct answers. And, and so I, I think that, that again, did a lot to relieve my concerns about some of the issues that we've had, about information, et cetera, that we felt we probably should have had before we found out about it in some other way.
Exactly.
Do we have other Port Authority Commissioner questions on Shane's presentation? Commissioner Luntz?
Commissioner Luntz, I think you have to take the headphones out. We can't hear you.
Still can't hear you, Rob. Are you on mute perhaps?
Can you unplug the headphones?
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Shane mentioned the risks of not doing the project. So I'd like to hear further articulation on what he sees those would be and also what Triple Five would see those would be. Thank you.
Mr. President and Commissioners, Commissioner Luntz. So I think the biggest risk of, of not doing the project is, you know, the, these projects have to continue to evolve, to continue to attract people. And, you know, the mall is 10% of the city's tax base. The hotels are another six and a half. So there's 16, 17% of the city's tax base tied up in the leisure and entertainment and shopping market. And these projects need to continue to evolve, to continue to attract people. And I think one of the things that COVID has, has surely showed is that having this asset in the community, the Mall of America, driving the admissions and heads in beds, if you will, in the 46 hotels that we have in the city. When that revenue all of a sudden goes away, it's a, it's a serious budget, budget challenge. And the mall is healthy today. I think it's a credit to the team. We just lost Rob. Oh, he's still there. It, it's a credit to the, to the organization. I've, you know, said, no matter what's happening with us at the mall, they, they operate one heck of a facility and they drive a lot of people to the city of Bloomington. And they put Bloomington on the map in some ways. And that's, that's been very good for us. But the project needs to continue to evolve in order to stay fresh. And I think that's the biggest risk of not doing anything. If you don't do this, I don't think any of us want to see any more retail out there. The office segment is going to be very slow for a while. I think that's a general consensus. And so what segments of development do you do? Or do you do nothing? I, I think the boards have generally said they want, you know, that, that's what the port authority's mission is, is to get South Loop developed. And we've been doing that. And it's been very successful in the past 10 years or so. We've got a lot of development happening out there. And, you know, COVID is going to challenge those things, especially for those other segments. And so what, what's missing, what can you develop that will continue to strengthen the city's position, both financially, both to help, you know, the project out, not because we have an interest in making sure the Jermesian family makes any more money, but because we have a relatively selfish interest in making sure that our property tax base is as stable as possible. And one of the ways to do that is to continue to add entertainment and things out there that brings money into the city's coffers. And so I think that's the risk of not doing the project. And if Mr. Hagan wants to speak for Triple Five, be happy to do that. Hopefully, we can get the technology working in the room. I think, yep, looks like that's working.
Working? Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, Port President Erickson and Commissioners and Commissioner Luntz. Yeah, I think Shane is, is spot on. You, you've heard me talking about it now for probably going on 10 years, how we need to transform Mall of America. We need to evolve. We need to take it to more of an entertainment model. As Shane and, and the mayor and the port president and city manager came out, saw our project, thank you for that, last month. The power of, of entertainment projects such as this water park, what it does for our project is one thing from a selfish perspective, driving traffic and, and tourism to Mall of America for our retailers. What it does for the city and, and heads in the beds, as Shane articulated, is another. This water park project, as we've talked about now for, for over three years, it will draw out 900,000 people a year, almost 40% of which will be tourists staying in hotels. A large portion of those, obviously, in Bloomington hotels. It will spur further development. It will spur a water park hotel that will support the water park. But again, driving taxes to the city of Bloomington, not only in the form of admissions taxes, but the water park and the lodging taxes as well. So it, it is, it is necessary for our sustainability, something we've talked about for a very long time. And I think for Bloomington's as well, for the hospitality community, as you've heard from Bonnie Carlson at the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau and from myself over, over a very long time. We think it's critical that we move forward with projects like this. The alternatives are not bright right now, as, as I agree with Shane. The office market is, is strained right now. The hospitality market is strained, but for adding a demand driver like, like a water park that would allow that to move forward. You know, there's, there's just really not good alternatives right now for moving forward with other types of projects. So to sit and wait is a risk. It's a risk for the mall's health, for our sustainability. It's a risk for hospitality and the hospitality community in Bloomington. I think it's a risk for all of us. So I think it is important that we figure out a way to move forward as we've been working on, I think, very cooperatively now for, for three years. And I think we're, we're, we're almost there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan.
There, there's another trend that I've been following, just looking at malls in general. And there's been a lot of articles in the Wall Street Journal and other things lately about the differentiation in malls across the country. And you, you have the Class A malls, of which the Mall of America is one of the premier ones in the country, holding their own in, in terms of sales, in terms of return of traffic, et cetera. And then the lower grade malls, the Bs and the Cs, and that are having difficulties. So I think this only reinforces the, the concept that we, we have got something that, you know, is, is got good sustainability based upon everything that we can see right now. So it, it's been interesting to me just to follow these articles and look at them.
Shane, Commissioner, Commissioner Luntz asked specifically about the, the risk of doing nothing. In just a couple of points, what are the specific risks to the city, to the port authority for doing this type of deal?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify. You, you asked what the risks of doing the deal, the opposite of.
Correct. Yeah. The, the other side of Commissioner Luntz's question, the commitment, the risk of doing nothing as opposed to what are the risks of doing this?
Sure. Yeah. So I think the risks of doing this are, you know, again, it's a different profile from the nonprofit model. Again, we've stress tested the nonprofit model during the pandemic. Of course, we talked a lot about that with the financing partners and others. You know, would the city been at risk during the nonprofit model? And the answer is no. We worked for two years to create a model that insulated the city from risks. That was, you know, top of mind in, you know, every one of those meetings practically. The risk profile gets less, even less if you do, you know, the private financing model. I think the worst case scenario that I can think of is the project doesn't perform the way that it's projected to perform. And in that scenario, the city has invested in parking. It has invested additional monies into the project, that 30 million in TIF. And in that scenario where that project doesn't perform, still the, the city has no obligation in a lot of, a lot of ways, especially, you know, after this, this 2021 authorization expires, the city has limited ways to actually bail the project out, if you will. So what would happen in that scenario? The project doesn't perform. The entity that owns the water park defaults on the debt. The asset still exists and it's an extremely valuable asset. It just maybe gets 100,000 fewer people than projected and maybe they don't pay 100% of what was projected. Maybe they only get 80% of the ticket price. And you combine those two things, there's still a substantial amount of money coming into the project every year. And then the debt would reset. They would go through a default scenario. The debt would get reset, probably stays open even unless there's another massive pandemic or something like that while that workout happens. And then you still have a project. From the city's perspective, you basically have the same thing. Now, the people that invested in the project, both equity and debt, you know, they have problems at that point. And there's lots of different, you know, angles of, if you're in equity. if you're an equity debt holder, if you're a mezz debt holder, mezzanine debt holder, which is kind of secondary to equity, and then there's the regular debt. Those are complicated workouts when that happens. But they don't really involve the city on a private financing deal. There's nothing to say that, you know, that entity couldn't come ask the city for assistance. But there's certainly no obligation for the city to do anything at that point. And I think, you know, our history has shown that we don't do that. We haven't bailed entities out. And so I think as long as the city, you know, heeds, city councils and the Port Authorities, heed the advice of legal staff and don't do that, you don't have a lot of risk of doing the project, really. I mean, you've got fenced money that can only be used for these types of things. And, you know, we've been studying this, and we've outlined the benefits. And so, yeah, there's reputational risk, as I mentioned in that one slide and things like that. But there's very limited, like, actual financial risk.
So the financial risk would be on the private developers, 555, not coming back to the city of Bloomington, the city of Bloomington taxpayers.
Right.
And at the same time, in your scenario, if, for example, they are 100,000 people short of their projections, that's still 800,000 people who have visited Bloomington, those associated heads in beds, eating in restaurants, enjoying the Mall of America, spending money elsewhere. It's just not to the level we were expecting.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, that's correct. So, I mean, again, you know, you could be off by 100,000 people. But you're right, that's still 800,000 people coming instead of 900,000 or a million. And maybe they're not paying, you know, maybe they're paying 80% of what the ticket price is projected to be. But they're still paying a ticket price that you're still getting an admission tax on. And of course, you know, half those people are staying in hotels or extending their conference days or whatever. And so you still have a project. The debt side of things, the private debt side of things, may be challenged in that scenario. But it is still the major benefits to the city.
Thank you.
I think it's also helpful to point out that the Mall of America has had a water project yet. There was a mall for 20 some years, and that has continued to maintain its viability and attract people to come and use it. So again, this is not something that would be a completely new project. It's new for Bloomington, certainly. But it's not new in the sense that it hasn't been done before in a market with some similarities to the Twin Cities.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hunt.
This may be a question for Mr. Hagan, but a couple of questions, actually. The, when you said 40% of the 900,000 are tourists, is that 60% coming from the metro area or just a little beyond the metro area? So they're not like overnight stays?
Mr. Hagan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Port President, Commissioners, Commissioner Hunt. Yes, we consider tourists, as does in the hotel feasibility study that we commissioned. Actually, in this case, for the feasibility study that was done, people that are actually renting a hotel room night. Well, they have a, there's a projection of actual hotel room nights. I think it ranged between the two feasibility consultants that we had, between 60,000 room nights a year and 90,000 room nights a year. I want to clarify that because somebody might be coming in from out of town and staying with their relatives as well. So what really matters, I think, to Bloomington is the hotel room night generation. And the range of that, it ranged from 60,000 room nights a year to 90,000 room nights a year.
Okay. And you may have mentioned this in the last meeting I wasn't able to attend. And we've gone, heard different numbers. But what's the current thought now on the ticket price?
Current thought on, that's a good question, Commissioner Hunt. The ticket price, so to give you a little history on ticket price revenues, I think what we have now is that our water park in New Jersey at the American Lead Project has now been open for a year. We had projected, before that project opened, we had projected, and this is the New York City market, for those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's eight and a half miles from Times Square on the New Jersey side of the river. We had projected the ticket price in, at that project would be $68 on average, right? You've got peak days, non-peak days, military discounts, kids. Blend them all together, we thought it would be $68. To date for 2021, we're at $99. So it's performed considerably better in terms of ticket price than we had thought. Attendance has been lower, right? First quarter of the year, it was under COVID restrictions. So we'll end the year down probably about 30% on attendance, but actually on par with the revenues that we had projected because of the higher ticket price. It is our belief ticket price here will be, it won't be $99. We're not going to get, we're not New York City market. It'll be considerably less than that. But we believe it's considerably more than was in the feasibility study that the city and the port had commissioned. I believe their projected average ticket price was $38 for year one.
So it would be more than that?
Correct. We believe it will be close to 60 as compared to 100, really, in the New York market. And again, when I say that, you need to understand it's very dynamic pricing, peak days, non-peak days, kids are less, and all kinds of discounting, group discounts, but blended together, it's probably going to be in the $50 to $60 range.
And the numbers that you've done through the feasibility, that's, the market supports that price?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand that.
I mean, you're thinking that once developed. And I'm not questioning that, you know, the, I'm sure it would be a very gorgeous site and so forth. But I'm just saying, would the market here support that price?
Absolutely.
60 or 70, or whatever it might be.
We do believe so. Yes, we've done a ton of homework and research on that. And we believe that the market will support that.
I'm just curious, when I last, November 10th meeting, I was actually in Disney World for that week.
Yeah.
I think we were paying 150 a day per person.
There you go. Right. This is a substantial discount to the Disney pricing model.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. On that note, I'm curious if there are still conversations around Bloomington residents having a discounted price.
Mr. President.
All right, I'm making you get your steps in.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And Councilmember or Commissioner, I'm not sure where the question, but the, you know, we haven't really discussed that. I think we were certainly open to that. We haven't got to that level of detail. I think from a total revenue standpoint, it's not a needle mover. So I think that's something we're certainly happy to talk about with Council and Port and with staff.
Great, thank you.
Well, I'll just say.
Mayor, I think we're getting close to saying we can maybe take some action on this.
I think so, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work that has gone into this and the level of detail that Shane was able to provide with us tonight. And it's straightforward, but it's a lot. It's a lot of information. So I really do encourage you, if you've got questions on this, please do speak up now. Because this, I mean, there's a lot going on here. As President Erickson mentioned, I think we have been talking about this long enough and are headed in that direction. But I just want to make sure that everybody's questions are answered and your minds are at ease as we move forward on this because it's a significant step forward. Councilmember Lomond, I saw a hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Hagan, I've got a question for you. And I'm not necessarily looking for an answer today. And I know that we've talked about this. But one of the things that I am particularly interested in, and I know that Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Boga have brought this up in the past as well, is around the idea of sustainability. You know, we've got the, you know, the, your project out there in Canada, and then the one that's out there in New Jersey. And in terms of, you know, what this looks like, you know, kind of in the short term with a comparison to those two properties, if we were to build this and put this thing together, what does that look like? And then kind of my secondary question is, in terms of making those previous properties more sustainable and what the long-term plans would be, if you can, speak to it in terms of what that sustainability in terms of this project. I know there's been some concern about water use and that type of thing and how that, what that looks like. You know, if you want, I'll pine on that today. But those are the things I'm looking for, kind of long-term, you know, as this thing kind of moves forward if we decide to go down this route.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lomond. Yeah, I can't give you the specifics on those. Now, I can tell you that when we were previously looking at this under the nonprofit model with the city and the port, we had met, actually, with the president of Lead. Came to town, and we met with them. And it was their goal, and we, and our goal, to make this the first Lead-certified water park in the country. That's still our goal. There was an incredible amount of thought put into what we could do to make this project sustainable or as sustainable as possible, including gray water recapture. And we had incorporated, those are incorporated in the design. The design has not changed. We intend to move forward with the same design that we had previously under the nonprofit model. So it is, for a water park, it is a very sustainable model, a very efficient model, considerably more so than the project that we have. As Port President mentioned, our project in the West Edmonton Mall has now been open for over 30 years. Technology on filtration and equipments and pumps is considerably different today than it was then. This will take a fraction of the power that that project does. It will consume a fraction of the water that that project does. Not terribly different than, though, our project from the DreamWorks Water Park in New Jersey. That just opened a year ago, right? So we've incorporated all of that newer technology into the DreamWorks project. So I think it'll be yet better than the DreamWorks project that's not Lead-certified, but considerably more efficient than the World Water Park in our project in Edmonton. And I'm sorry, Councilmember, was there a second question that?
Yeah, I think the second one is kind of, you know, long-term, you know. I mean, certainly, we've seen in each iteration, which you just laid out, you know, the improvement. But I think one of the concerns is, you know, how do we, you know, is there going to be a process by which, in terms of redeveloping it, in terms of trying to continue to seek that on a long-term basis of trying to improve, you know, this particular project in terms of that sustainability, trying to press that as much as we possibly can. I know that the folks are very concerned about that, you know, making sure that we're kind of pressing forward and making sure that this is kind of on an ongoing basis is sustainable as possible. I know there are money challenges with that and that type of thing. But want to, you know, if you, you know, you don't have to do it today, but I am interested to hear more about what the long-term plans are in terms of what that looks like and what you have done on the other properties to help with that sustainability.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lomond. Yeah, obviously, don't have specifics today on what we plan on changing long-term of the water park. But I think, you know, you've seen what we've done at Mall of America. We take sustainability very seriously. We've talked about before, most people don't realize, shopping mall concept like Mall of America inherently is actually a very efficient project, right? If we took our parking, our structured parking, spread it out, it would take over 100 acres of land to park 15,000 spaces that we have out there today. There is no heating in Mall of America in the wintertime, right, up from just the heat sources. But I think to your point, we're always looking ways to become more efficient and more sustainable. We partnered with you, or you helped us on the LED lighting retrofit through all the parking decks. You've seen what we've done throughout the entire project. So we just, that's part of our DNA. It's not only good for us, good for the community. It's good for our electrical consumption and our utility costs, to drive those down as best as we can. So we're always looking for ways to become more efficient. And we'll do the same thing. It would be no different in the water park as we go through the years. When better technology comes up and it makes sense to retrofit, we will do that.
Commissioner Hunt? Commissioner Luns?
Am I on? I'm struggling all night here.
You're on.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Yes, you can go.
I have one lingering question, probably for Shane relative to the expo and how it fits all together with this. But in the November meeting, it was stated that if the tribal with the most I said more would be all
You're breaking up pretty bad, Commissioner Luns. Commissioner Luns?
The land that would be available, adjoining lands and everything else would be the minimum site size that the international organization would approve. So I guess what's happening and are we against minimal?
Shane, I think the question was regarding the site size and the requirements that the BIE might require for an expo. I'm sorry, Rob, you broke up a little bit there. You were kind of cutting in and out. I'm not sure if we came through, and you're still cutting in and out. So, Mr. Redding?
Mr. President, Commissioner Luns, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. So I think the gist of Commissioner Luns' question relates to what the mayor said, site size for expo. And the adjoining lands, while not the full 62 acres, that is the maximum site size for an expo in a year that doesn't end in zero or five. It is big enough to hold an expo. And so I think that's the answer to your question, Commissioner Luns. And you're showing up as a triangle on my screen, which you may not be hearing this, but that is the answer to the question. Well.
We'll see if we can get him back. There he is. Rod, did you hear, did you hear Shane's answer? Afraid we're fighting some technology with Commissioner Luns.
Commissioner Luns, did you hear the answer to the question?
No, I did not. I had breakup, both video and audio, extensive breakup.
It might be best, Rob, maybe if you could turn off your camera just so we, just so we have a little more stable.
It's coming well now.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Luns, I think your question related to the minimum site size for the expo. And the answer to that is, if that's the question and you can confirm or not, but the answer is yes. That adjoining lands as a site for the expo is big enough. It's not the full 62 acres that is a maximum size for one of these expos that ends in a year that's not zero or five. It's not one of the huge expos. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Well, partially. I believe you stated that what we would have available without Spruce Farm would be the minimal tolerance for holding the event. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
I'm not hearing anything.
That is correct.
All right. Well, as Mr. President said, it seems that we're headed in the direction of action here. And we have a couple of different motions, one by the city council, one by the port authority, to move this forward. So unless there are additional questions or comments, council, I would look for action on the motion on the screen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Beloga, if you could hold on just one second. Commissioner Luntz, are you back with us yet?
Well, I hope so. Can you, can I be heard?
We can, talk quickly. Before you break up again.
I don't know what the problem is tonight, why I'm having such difficulty. I'd like to articulate my comments and feelings on this, but I don't think I'm going to be able to do it. It would be a technical problem, so I'll just have to keep them to myself.
Councilmember Beloga.
So I offer a motion to approve the attached water park financing and adjoining lands option letter of intent and direct staff to develop agreements and documents based upon terms or consideration at a future concurrent meeting of the city council and port authorities.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Loman to approve the water park financing and adjoining lands option letter of intent. Hearing no further council discussion on this? Carolyn.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Colter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Bussy.
Aye.
Seven, zero.
And I would entertain then the motion for the port authority. And Mayor, I would ask you, because I can only see four or five people, so if, I don't know that we have. So please, Port Authority Commissioner, speak up if you're willing to make that motion.
I am.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Keller makes the motion.
Yes, I would make the motion as articulated in the recommendation here.
We have a second.
Second by Peterson.
Second by Commissioner Peterson. Any further discussion? And Todd, Carolyn, please call the roll.
Bussy.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Hunt.
I with the comment that I will vote in favor of the 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 letter of intent, but I'm more so in support of the the mechanism for the land for the expo. I am, I am not a supporter as yet fully of the the water park for several reasons that I've voiced in the past, but the, I don't see it as being something that the market supports. Clearly, I haven't seen the feasibility studies and so forth, and the cost is of great concern for our citizens at, of Bloomington, so. But I will go ahead in support of the the letter of intent discussion.
Keller.
Aye.
Luntz.
I'd like to comment, hopefully this will get through. I'm terribly torn by this because I'm a strong believer, would love to see the expo come. I have many doubts yet on the water park. I hate to see the dedication of that much land to it, for one thing. I'm not sure that it meets the long-term vision of what the South Loop Mall of America was to be as a third twin-city business center, call it. And I feel, I do, and I will admit, I feel very presumptuous. Think the world of triple five as developers, operators, leasers, innovators. But I just don't see that this water park is going to provide the benefits that everyone seems to feel are going to be there long-term. Plus, it's a dedication of a significant piece of ground in in the area for that. And I understand it's their land and I, believe me, I know property rights. So with great, great reserve, I'm going to vote for it at this point. And I'm fully understanding that voting for this is a, you know, is a tacit approval of a, of the water park, but I'm doing it in pursuit of getting the expo. That's, that's the primary driving force for me, so I will vote aye.
I need to interject at this point, and I hate to be rude, but I would ask our council to let us know if a simple yea or nay is the only thing that's appropriate this time. I appreciate everybody's comments, but it it seems to me that this motion requires a vote that is is unambiguous and and notwithstanding everybody's concerns that we have a clear unconditional yes or no. Am I wrong, council?
Julie, can you respond to that?
Sure, yes. The, in order for the motion to pass, each member will need to say whether they agree with the motion or they do not agree with the motion.
But without condition.
There's no condition. I would have articulated that earlier if I would not have had a technical problem. So that is, this was my opportunity. Things seem to be working, so that's why I want, that's why I wanted to say that.
I understand that. I, I'm just concerned that as this gets recorded, our, you know, we need to have discussions and I'm sorry about the technical problems, but I, it concerns me that our votes need to be binary, yes or no, and that comments and concerns are for a different part of the agenda. And again, I invite our council to speak to that, but I would hate to see us get into some concerns or conflicts down the road about whether the vote we're taking now is valid.
Julie, Dave.
Well, unfortunate, well, the the member, Member Luntz has already made those comments. So if we want to go back and and have the members give their vote again, that would be acceptable.
Do you, do you think that that is necessary to do?
I think Commissioner Luntz has explained why he made the comments he did, because he couldn't. He was having technical difficulties and wanted to say what he would have said earlier had he been able to do so with respect to, you know, if if he didn't have problems with his tech. So I think it's.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, there, Commissioner Hunt had a similar.
I also commented, Julie, yes.
So I, again, it concerns me that it, a vote that isn't simply up or down is, creates ambiguity about the validity of the vote. And I'm sorry to be a pain about this, but but this is the lawyer in me coming out here. And the consequences of the ambiguity is is beyond me. But it seems to me we're voting to approve here rather than the the votes we've had recently, which is to to support the city council's responsibility to take these matters up. And again, I'd, let me just apologize for the fifth time, but I think procedure probably requires the lack of ambiguity.
I think if I may, Mr. President, it might just be cleaner to redo the motions. I think Commissioner Hunt and Commissioner Luntz have, you know, talked about why they may support the motion. And so perhaps we should just take it from the top if that be the cleanest, so.
Is that acceptable, Julie? Or what, how would we do that procedurally than just?
Yes, that would be acceptable. If you wanted to start over again with the motions, that would be great.
Okay, well, let us then start over again with the motion. So then I would again ask a port authority member to, to make the motion that we, as outlined.
And I will again make the motion for, as, excuse me, as articulated as a port authority requirement in the recommendation provided by our staff as evidenced in this slide.
And Commissioner Peterson, you seconded before, do you want to second again?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Todd, Carolyn, please call the roll.
Bussy. Carter.
Aye.
Hunt.
No.
Keller.
Aye.
Luntz.
No.
Peterson.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Five, two.
Okay, the motion is approved, so thank you, everybody, for your discussion. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that completes our agenda for this evening for the, the Joint Port Authority Council Meeting on this Thursday night, December 9th, with no other business. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn the council portion of this meeting.
So moved, Colter.
Second.
A motion by council, by Colter, second by Carter to adjourn this evening. Hearing no further council discussion.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Colter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Bussy.
Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned on the council side.
And I will adjourn the port authority and just wish everybody a very happy holiday season. Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.